Let the call be made to order, or to call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Here.
Notori.
Here.
Strumel Burke.
President.
Mayor Melham.
Here. Sunshine Notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and the December 20th issue of the Velvet Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Dubble Town Hall bulletin board and a copy is on file in municipal office's office.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know that Councilman Riddell is not present, but he will be available as long as we can. Executive sent the motion for executive session.
Make the motion.
The motion made, executive going to executive session, or to call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Strumel Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. The reason why we're going into executive session is to discuss personnel, put on the agenda by Manager Tucci. At this point, we are going to have to clear the room. Do we need you? We're just coming back to our regular meeting now. We're going to pick up at item number five, which is the approval of minutes.
Regular meeting of April 23rd.
You get a motion?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion made, second to approve minutes for all.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Strumel Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Report to the manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My report is brief this evening, inasmuch as this is my last meeting as your manager. We trimmed trees on nine streets, we removed the trees on two streets, we've taken out three stumps on various streets, we patched about 20 different streets, different sized potholes, we cleaned various township properties, and we repaired and/or replaced six water mains and/or services. Just briefly, if I might, I want to thank this council, this mayor and council, as well as previous mayor and council for allowing me to be your manager for the last three and a half years. And if I could just briefly hit on some of our accomplishments, when I got here in January of 2016, we needed to reconcile years 2013 to 2015. We successfully did that, we cleaned up the financial situation here in the township, and I'm proud to say that we are on sound footing right now. We settled all of our contracts. In the last three and a half years, we have had no lawsuits filed against the township, although we still have liability for some previous lawsuits that predated me. As far as the police and fire retro payments were concerned, as a result of a conversation that I had with Chief Minkini, who's here this evening, we came up with a plan to offer to both of those bargaining units for them to forego the retro payments, which would have come to close to $800,000, which would have had to been added to this year's budget, but they gave that up and turned for some concessions in some other areas. We have initiated, since I've been here, six redevelopment projects that are still in the works and being redefined and reworked by this council. We began updating and reorganizing our departments. We still have a way to go, but we've made significant progress. And just two things I'd like to highlight, two of the highlights, I think, of my three and a half years, three and a half years here were, number one, the appointment of our police chief, Mark Minkini, who I believe is second to none, and I want to thank you for your help and all your assistance. And also our fire chief, our newly-introduced fire chief, John Oliveri, who's brought a sense of solidarity and togetherness into that other important department. While some of you have questioned over the years how much time I spent here in Dubble because of some of my other activities, I can assure you, you didn't have a full-time manager on site, but you had a full-time manager plus for the last three and a half years. So I thank you all for the opportunity, I thank you for the honor of serving you, and I'm here to serve and do whatever I can do to help this great town. And one last thing, I know you're going to be in great hands with incoming manager who's here, Anthony, is an old friend and a seasoned professional, and I know you're going to be served well, and Anthony, any way I can help you, I stand ready to do that. Thank you. That's my man.
Thank you, Ma. That's it? You good?
I'm good.
We do have some council remarks, but we're going to do that on their new business.
I hope so.
New business goes to get to the meeting, new business. So that's the report of the manager. Next up, we have a report of the mayor. I only have a few comments. I didn't think, I don't know if Ma will mention it, but we had a fire in Dubble on May 15th. The fire, I think, was called in sometime after midnight, actually would be after midnight in the 16th. I want to thank our chief, because I did get an update about that fire. I actually was on scene by about 12:20, and I was briefed by the battalion chief that was on site. So we had a great command of the fire, and I will say this, the family, when I got there, it was cold, it was raining, it was wet, the family was sitting on the curb when I got there, and I went to go communicate with the family, unfortunately, I had an issue communicating with the family, but we did have a Spanish-speaking fireman that did an amazing job. And just to be able to comfort those people and ask them if they needed bread crossed or ask that they need relocation assistance, that was very good. And the next day, there was an outpouring from the community itself. I know our school number nine principal got involved, we put some Facebook posts up, the family was well cared for, well taken care of, all their needs have been being met, they're currently in temporary housing, but I think the fire department, as always, just did a great job. Last Monday, we had a renaming of our post office for our Mr. Savela, and that was turned out, that was great. We had congresspeople here, we had U.S. senators here, that was a great event, we had that last Monday. Yesterday, we had four Memorial Day ceremonies, a little break from the norm, I think we usually do three, we kind of adjusted it a little bit, we worked very closely with our veterans organizations. Myself, Councilman Cazarelli, who's on the Historic Preservation Committee, met with them, I met with them twice, the police department did a great job, I know many of our firefighters were there, as well as our police officers, it was a great day, all around, it was a beautiful day, actually. I did actually, since she was here at that event, I did have the opportunity to speak with Senator Ruiz, and she told me, because she keeps getting emails from me, and the town manager is also CC'ing on them, as I continue to advocate for the cleaning of Rucker Street down that area where the intersection is, of all the potholes and all of that, those of you who have been listening to me talk, I've been advocating for that repair for a long time. The state has been blaming the counties, the county's been saying it's the states. Yesterday, Senator Ruiz was here with us, she told us that, I think it was our DPW, somebody found maps that prove that it is indeed the state's responsibility, those maps have now been sent to the state, so we're waiting on to see what the state's response is going to be. We obviously want that whole area milled and paved. My office receives one or two complaints a week about blown tires and everything else, so we're very excited about that. We did, I just got notice today, we received a $62,000 grant for Clean Communities, that's going to help us with some litter, some recycling, it's going to help us even with some summer staff, I believe, as we employ some high school or college-age children throughout the summer, and paint curbs and do whatever. That's really it for my mayor's report, so we're going to move on now to item number eight, which is the public hearing on the 2019 municipal budget.
Mayor, this is the time fix for the public hearing on the 2019 municipal budget. The budget was approved by the mayor and council on April 23rd, 2019, with advertising files required by law, together with the notice of hearing at this time. Mayor, I have a resolution regarding the reading of the budget by title.
I want a resolution before its adoption.
I have to read it first.
Okay.
Sorry. Resolution to read 2019 municipal budget by title, whereas NJSA 48,4-8, as amended provides that the budget as advertised shall be read in full for public hearing, or that it may be read by title, it may be read by its title only if, one, at least only prior to the date of the hearing and after hearing a complete copy of the approved budget, A shall be made available for public inspection, and B shall be made available to each person upon request. And now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council to township of Dubble, that is hereby declared that the conditions of NJSA 48,4-8, as amended, set forth in subsection 1A and 1B, have been met, and therefore, the budget for 2019 shall be read by title only.
Motion for its adoption.
Second.
Motion made, second, for call roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
De Penya.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Strumel Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Now, do we need a motion to go to public hearing?
Now you can do the next part of the question. Can you be that?
Sorry? You work a lot?
That's what I'm asking, who says mayor?
Yes. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address, an address before speaking. I'll recognize one speaker at a time, in order of rising, as nearly as I can determine. Please address all questions of chair, where necessary, they will be referred to individual members of the township council and/or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget that is before us, school or county matters are not proper subjects for this hearing, and cannot be discussed or mentioned tonight. I now declare the public hearing for the 2019 budget open. Does we vote on that, or not?
Yes.
It's good. Anybody have any comments regarding the budget? Mr. Frant Antoni?
The mayor and council, Mr. Frant Antoni, 129,000. We brought the budget on sheet 10, Cable Vision and Verizon, we took in $457,000, it's a big increase from when we used to take in $50,000, $60,000. There's been problems with televising these town meetings, some of it, my wife suggested that we use the mass complexes, the Board of Ed built an outdoor classroom, they're going to sit there. What better outdoor classroom, having the mass complex come here, given the funding, and we did, when I was in office, we gave them $2,000 for cameras and other equipment, and we would take them around, I took them around to show them the recycling program. So I think some of this money, almost half a million dollars, should go to the schools to have the mass complex film our meetings and put them on Channel 34. Also on sheet 10, there's a developer's agreement, $100,000, from what developer?
That's the old Jergens, the old Roche facility.
The what?
The old Roche facility, Jergens, where Jergens used to be.
On Franklin Avenue. On sheet 12, on the mayor and council, the salaries, but then other expenses, the 2018, $8,621 for expenses, what was that spent for?
$8,500, so you took it in the purchasing office, mate? No, Mayor.
Mayor and council, salaries of $43,000, I understand that, but for other expenses, $8,621 for expenses.
That's for travel, that's for legal municipality, that's registrations and things of that nature.
The legal municipality expenses came out of that?
Anything that the mayor and council does comes out of the mayor and council's overheads.
On sheet 15, we've got dental and vision expenses of $310,000, and the group health plan out is over $12 million. Combined, they're like $12.5 million. This is an item that we can shortcut. If you folks, I know some of you are political animals, you've been following the state, what's happened with Sweeney and the government, they want to rein in these employees' health benefits, they're killing this state. So all politics is local, we got to do it here, one way to cut these costs, increase your deductibles. That's as simple, I do it, all my insurance policy and my property, I increase deductibles to keep my premiums lower. So you're going to have to address that, because it's growing exponentially, now it's like one-fifth of our budget, just the hospitalization. 15E, we've got DPW, equipment and maintenance, salaries and wages are $45,000, and other expenses are $140,000, that's $388,000 for equipment maintenance. I don't know if you've traveled around other communities, I mean, our vacuum truck, I don't think these trucks are ever cleaned, there used to be a time when they, come in at the end of the day, they're power washed, get the dirt. Our vacuum truck is a disgrace, it don't look as if it's been cleaned since the day we bought it. Go take a look at Blofeld, it's like the day they bought it. So we're paying almost $400,000 for equipment maintenance, maybe we ought to sublet that out to the private, privatize that thing, because we're not, take a look at your equipment down there, it's a disgrace. And here's a pet thing of mine, on 15H, recreation, I think one council person brought up the thing, maybe we should charge for recreation, and that the broken pants, or maybe uniform. $682,000, that is less than 1% of our budget, it is 1/20 of what we're spending on healthcare for our employees, but don't ever charge recreation. I don't mind paying taxes for things that we need, our kids deserve free, and there's no such thing as free, we're paying, but we're paying a pittance, less than 1% of our $65 million budget is going through recreation. Let these kids and let these families enjoy it for free, that's one courtesy we can extend without tax dollars at all. So I don't want to ever hear again, oh, maybe we should charge t-shirts, maybe a small fee for it and all that, and you folks know the median family income in Dubble is less than $60,000, you can't afford it. You've got all this other money, $12 million for health benefits for our well-paid town employees, let's get this, less than 1% of our municipal budget for recreation, let's give that to our children, and our families and all that. Line 18, DPW, refuse disposal, what is this for? This above and beyond a garbage contract?
Page 18, we'll pay then.
18.
Page 18.
No.
I'm not paying you.
Yeah, this is page 18, DPW refuse disposal, $63,946.
Sheet 18 or page?
Sheet 18.
Sheet 18.
Prior year's bills. The prior year's bill.
A prior year's, that's what tipping fees. That's tipping fees, that's what we pay for disposal of our refuse.
Aren't 15 fees paid under the garbage contract?
You have, that's a prior year bill, you have a bill for collection, and you have a bill for tipping fees, two separate expenses.
But this refuse, was we the citizen's disposal?
That's only stuff we disposed of, yeah.
Was it to clean up the yard?
No.
It's a bill, Vin, that was, we didn't have sufficient money in last year's budget, so we got, we had to raise it in the 2019 budget, so it's a prior year's bill, the rest of the tipping fees are on sheet 20 of the budget for the garbage disposal and collection and tipping fees, but that bill represents an outstanding bill from a prior year.
Because I never saw a separate bill listed under the DPW.
Well, that's because the sanitation bill comes in through the DPW department, and when you have a prior year bill, you have to list a vendor, and the department is responsible for that bill, that's why it's shown as this.
We'll move on to sheet or page 20, Safe Valley Sewer Contract, now $3.14 million. Just observing in my neighborhood and my street, I think a big increase is in these illegal apartments all over the place. We just had about, two years ago, Cross Street for me, the homeowner moved to Pennsylvania, rented his apartment, a week after they rented, 9:30 at night, she got going down the side door to the bank.
Mr. Frant Antoni, I need you to keep your comments specifically to the numbers in this budget.
Well, this is, I'm kind of wondering for this big thing, all these illegal apartments, because the more you flush the toilet, the more you take showers and all that, and now just two weeks ago, we've got another neighbor, Cross Street, losing on four cars, we don't know how many people are in and out of these places, we got it cracked out, and this is one of the things we say, what is wrong with illegal apartments? These are the kind of things that affect us, for the more people you get living, and a lot of them illegal, and I told you, there's five houses within the end of my block, basement apartments, attic apartment, one finally we caught last year, and he got fined $500 right here I was here, a month later, they're back in there. So we got to have a follow-up, but this is, this is the budget time to show you how illegal apartments, some of the problems it creates for us. The other thing on 24B, recycling tonnage, we, of the appropriation, $10,166, and on the Clean Communities, we've got $55,900. Now, I know Clean Communities, part of the Clean Communities, Mayor, you've got to do public advertisement, and you've got to publicize things. I know I used to do it, every month, we had a press release. I haven't seen, not only this administration, but the force sitting up there from before, I've never seen anything in the paper, telling people to retire, I mean, to recycle and all. So we're getting this, almost $70,000, I think part of it can be spent on publicizing and getting our people to retire, and once again, you're doing a great job, you're really doing a great job in catching up to Board of Education spending. You know, most towns, three-quarters of the budget, they say, is taxed at Board of Ed, you know, now, the Board of Ed budget, I think, was $74 million, you're now up to $67 million, a $2.3 million increase from last year. $2,343,000 increase. You're doing a good job, this kind of stuff increases foreclosures, makes the illegal apartments, because people can't afford their rent and all that. We've got to use the two words I keep writing in the letters, cut spending, not increasing. Now, you're hearing one year, $2.3 million increase in our budget, and that's on, if you want to look, it's on page 29. So I know this is the time, I know you've got time, because you're still waiting, I believe, for the county and the other things you need for the budget, but maybe you seven can get together and cut a $2 on this.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Anybody else specifically on the 2019 budget?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47, Floyd Street, just a few quick questions. First of all, page sheet 10, has cable vision gross receipts fee? Where is the white item for Comcast or Xfinity? Or is cable vision the placeholder for Comcast or Xfinity?
Sheet 10.
Sheet 10, it says cable vision gross receipts, and then Verizon, those are, I know Verizon is one of the permitted cable companies in Dubble, but also Comcast is franchised, so where's the Comcast item?
Comcast is cable vision.
Comcast, should that be changed, do we have cable, is there a cable vision?
We used to have cable vision, so it's probably just never been changed, the label.
Can that be changed, then, to correctly reflect to the company? Yes, thank you.
You got that, Jim?
I did a quick review of the budgetary changes for the various departments, and in general, the increases for this next fiscal year are very modest, with one or two exceptions. Just a little quickly review, the manager's office is seeing approximately a $40,000 increase. The clerk's office, surprisingly, is dropping 35K. The, let's see, the law department is increasing by about 146K. I don't know if everyone in the audience has this full budget, but hopefully this will soon make its way to the township website. The police department, very modest, only a 45, 45K increase. But then we get to the fire department, and I'm sure there's a legitimate reason for this, but the fire department's budget for the next fiscal year is increasing by $1.3 million. So our police department's only going up 45K, but relative to the police department, there's an astronomical increase in the fire department. Is there a reason, is this in connection with the Silver Lake House, you have hired new staff, can you give me some quick explanation why?
Yeah, we're going to address that when you're done speaking.
All right.
Go ahead.
And Public Works, again, a very modest increase, only 150K, and, let's see, Health and Human Services is actually dropping by about 8,000. The Department of Recreation is dropping by 10,000, construction is...
Do you have questions, Mr. Sheldon?
No, I just wanted to, but that was, my salient question here was, why the large relative increase for the fire department, when most other departments are either staying constant or actually showing a net decrease, but the fire department is the outlier?
We can answer.
And just one last thing, Mr. Frant Antoni kind of excoriated the Board of Education for, in comparison...
If your statement is not on this budget, you can speak on that door in public space.
But the board did cut it back.
Mr. Sheldon, yes, public space.
All right, all right. Oh, and one last thing, when you had the special hearing for the budget last October 5th, as you recall, Mr. Falcone had said that he hadn't been properly given the A4F form from the Board of Ed.
Mr. Sheldon, public participation.
All right, but if he needs it, I have copies of it tonight, if he hasn't already received it. Thank you.
So one of the questions that I can answer, I know you mentioned the $140,000 law budget, that's yet another lawsuit judgment settlement. Actually, no, that wasn't the settlement, that was a judgment.
It was a portion of one of...
The judgments.
The judgments.
We're at $500,000 or $600,000, so when Mr. Frant Antoni talks about saving costs and cutting costs and all this stuff, that's really what we're dealing with, we're still dealing with lawsuits that we have judgments against us from previous years, that unfortunately, roosters come home to roost, and we have to settle, we have to pay these lawsuits out. So that $140,000 increase to the budget was strictly to pay for just one portion of one of those judgments.
In regard to the lawsuits, you had mentioned at a council meeting a few months ago, that you were going to compile a list of all of the lawsuits, past and pending, and make that available on the township's website. What is the status of that?
I never said, and I don't want to have a back and forth conversation, I'll answer your question, but we're not going to go back and forth, we do have a list of some of the numbers, I never set it up on the website, but I believe the town attorney has those recent numbers since, at least, he's been here, we've been here, it's to the tune of $500,000 or $600,000.
I'll check the video record, I think you did say that you were going to share that information with the community.
You can see that, do you have anything? Yeah, I can answer this question, I'm fine, it's a very simple answer, there's three years' worth of salary increases, '17, '18, and '19, and two years of retroactive pay, because I'm sure you heard that, we saved about $800,000, all right, in retro pay between the police and fire department, based on the negotiation that we conducted with them. So that's why you see that large spike there, as opposed to a minimal spike in the police department, all right, which was only a year.
So the police department only had one year, but the fire department is three years?
Three years, that's right, '17, '18, and '19 of salary increases.
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut, just to piggyback on that, because I'm seeing that we had salary of $28 million last year, and now we're at 29.85, just about rounding off. I mean, that's 1.8 million more in salaries, and, you know, the related salaries and wage expenses, is that what you're saying, Maura, that a lot of us is?
Multiple years, yes, multiple years.
Multiple years, so that held to this point, and recent hires and increases in heads?
No, actually, our, the numbers are probably down by a couple, and as we continue to reorganize and consolidate, we expect them to go down even a little bit more.
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, I'm looking at DPW, my shop is across the street, my property is.
Does this have a question on the...
Yes, it does, yes it is, I mean, we don't have money to operate the town, the town is a disgrace, there's a mountain of dirt and...
You can absolutely make these comments during public participation.
These transferables, I mean, you're increasing 150,000, and DPW have $300,000 worth of transfer that's accumulated over years, 300,000, that'd have to be transferred off the property by law, you don't have money to operate the town, so we've got money for salaries and various wage-related things, we don't have any money to run the town, the town is a disgrace, really, you got to get on the beam.
That's your opinion, and... That's your opinion, and I really need you to keep your comments to the budget numbers.
$2.3 million increase in a town of 2.3 square miles. I know when you add the 1.1 of the county, then you come up to 3.4. But that 2.3 square mile town, you've now gone $67 million, .3 budget to operate this small town? It's a disgrace. I don't see how you expect this town to afford this. It's just simply not, not affordable.
Thank you, anybody else? Strictly on the budget. Observing no further applicants on the floor, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Mayor, do you think that can adopt this budget?
No, I don't think we're adopting, we're not adopting.
Want to close the hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, take a motion, close the hearing.
One second.
We have a motion made in second, close the hearing, clerk color off.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yeah.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natar?
Yes.
Shumelber?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, communications?
A letter of resignation received from the board of members of the branch leveling board.
Okay, ordinances.
Remember this time, Mayor.
You have a motion to open public commenting?
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second, clerk color off.
Councilmember Cazarelli? DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natar?
Yes.
Shumelber?
Yes.
Mayor Melling?
Yes. Now we're opening up the regular public commenting portion of the meeting. Yes, you go.
Jim Messina, 255 Franklin Avenue. At the last meeting, I was here to comment on the disgusting situation out at DPW. I saw, I know this gentleman is pretty familiar with it. I asked three questions. How many cubic yards do we have to remove? If we don't know, we should find that out right away. It's going to affect, I think Mr. Tucci said, if we're going to budget $200,000, that doesn't look like it's going to be quite enough. If the field is contaminated, which I'm pretty sure it is, has it been tested? Has anybody notified a testing company to, to test it? And when will we commence the cleanup? And this gentleman's correct, the, the maintenance, the trucks are a disgrace, and Vinnie's right. I don't agree with Vinnie all the time, but if you look at Bloomfield and see the way they keep their equipment, we're, we're like a second, a third world country. So I guess, Mayor, you don't have the answers to those questions, they were in the minutes last, last month.
Is that a statement, or is that a question?
It's a question. Do you have the answer to those questions?
As soon as you're done, your comments will, will...
I'm done, thank you.
So actually, some of those questions were actually answered last week, or last meeting, when we said that we had $200,000.
Correct.
That answered one of the questions that I was able to answer. And Mr. Tucci, I believe, has the other answers.
Yes, there's approximately 12,000 cubic yards of dirt, and that's down here.
That answers one of the...
Which probably don't, Jim, because you've been around for the couple of times.
Yeah.
And 3,000, I'm sorry.
Not today, I don't want to have a back and forth, just...
And 3,000 cubic yards of leaves and brush, based upon, the dirt has not been tested as of yet, because we're not going to do that until we pass this budget, we have some money in here. And actually, this is going to overlap the 200,000, all right, we're pretty much June, May is over, all right? So the 200,000 will carry us for the last six months of the year, and then I will assume that the new manager will put additional money in here, all right, to get rid of another portion of that next year. And then it'll probably take a year after that, probably 2021, to get rid of all of it, because our, our preliminary estimates for disposal, all right, are about $35 a ton, which would be right around $600,000. I have a question for you, if it's permitted, Mayor. How, I, I heard you say at the last meeting, I was a little puzzled, you said that dirt was contaminated. Why do you think the dirt's contaminated?
It was our vac truck. And believe me, I know firsthand, our vac truck...
Of course, I'm just asking a question, okay?
If they did a sewer line, they would suck out where the sewer line was?
Right.
And dump it in the back. They used to do that all the time, so...
I, I don't know that they do that.
I don't know if they do that anymore.
They don't, but I'm just curious as to...
It's a lot of speculation, but we're going to test.
We're going to test it before we get rid of it.
I believe you're going to have to, and thank you very much for that. That was a potent answer, 12,000 cubic yards, which was right in the wheelhouse. I said over 10,000, but thanks again.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else?
Phil is Frantantoni on Prospect Avenue. First, I'd like to thank Chief Manikini for putting the bicycle patrols back on the road, and that he told me that Motorcycle Mall donated the bikes, some of the bikes. And I thank you very much for them being back on the road, because I think it's a mingling with the kids, means a lot. And I want to know what resolution number...
Right, I'm going to school on the bus tomorrow.
Resolution number nine, what's that all about, what are you filing?
Is that your, your final question?
No.
Okay, why don't we?
Why can't you tell me what it is?
Because it's not, we don't really have a conversation, so I can give you all the questions, I don't want to take away from your time, that's all.
Yeah, well, don't worry about that. And the resolution that you have on here, about the maintenance for the overhead doors. I passed the firehouse on Washington Avenue, and I think they did put in new overhead doors. But it's beyond me why the sides that go down the side of the building where the doors go in, why weren't they fixed? They're all rotted on the bottom. You put no doors in, or rotted, whatever that is, if it's metal or something, wouldn't you fix the whole thing? Just put doors up and not fix that part of it? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Tucci?
Yes, the $3,000 of...
It's about resolution number nine, right?
Right, resolution number nine, that was assessed against us, was from the EPA, all right, and they concern some of the testing of the water, which is North Water, so obviously we get our supply from North, so North's issues become our issues. And it was also an issue as to where our records were maintained. The EPA wanted the records maintained onsite, as opposed to in our engineer's office, which is also.
And do you, do you justify our store, or do you want to get back on that?
I'm just the first I'm hearing about that, but I will look into it. And replacing the doors, it's like, you know, buying a new suit and wearing an old shirt, so I will look into that. That did not happen, we will make sure that it does happen. And you are right, that should have been done at once.
Mr. Tucci, I think Mr. Graziano has a...
When we, when we first got elected about a year ago, Mr. Tucci, remember we walked? And I think the director, they already went out and gave a quote for the door and the motors that were bad. So that's what the quote was given to you, and it was exercised to get, because the emergency was, there was no safety on it for the door, it was about people, the firemen getting hurt. They had to manually pick the doors up, so there was immediately to get that done, and that's what happened.
So they, so...
I don't know about, we didn't know about the frame piece, we knew about the functionality of the door.
Right, it was a safety hazard, so we addressed that, but I will address that, Mr. Chief. Chief, are you aware, would you like to respond?
I'm not positive, but I, I think, I think Tom Lance might be aware of that, and somebody other thinks on there, so...
Okay.
I'm not positive, but there is some, there is some line on the side of the doors there, and we, you know, we need to get rid of that.
Okay, we'll get out of that, we'll, we'll talk.
Anybody else? Public commenting?
Marilyn Torde from Lower Avenue. From Lower Avenue, from Rucker Street to Academy, is two-way now. It used to be a one-way. It's very, very dangerous. Two cars can collide going through. So I was wondering why the one-way was taken down, when it was a good thing.
Is that new?
Yes, that's what I'd like to know, why it was taken down, and if we could do something about it to make it a one-way again. Because also now you're going to have Walgreens, and you're going to have people coming out onto Rucker Street, coming up to Hornbower, because that's a one-way going up.
I know our police chief is here, and I can defer to him. I know that, I believe when that was initially changed to a one-way, there was really no traffic study or anything that was done for that.
Becoming a traffic back-up door, rush hour, whoever's going to bubble in, and with the upcoming Walgreens...
Well, you're getting ahead of me, so...
Well, that's why it's been changed back.
I believe it was initially changed without proper studies, and it was just voted on by ordinance, it was changed.
That's true.
Then when we had a traffic department look at it and do a study, they deemed that it shouldn't be a one-way, that it should go back. Also, traffic was backing up so far down Rucker Street that was actually interfering with portions of Washington Avenue. There were several reasons why our traffic department, and that's not something that we do. We take their advice, and we take their reports. I have a report here from a meeting, two meetings ago, a resident complained about streeting, speeding. Our traffic department goes out and does studies, and they give us a report, and then we act on those reports. So obviously, it was their recommendation to change that back to a two-way to alleviate the traffic down Rucker Street, which will do nothing but increase, and there will be more traffic now that Walgreens is there. Anybody else?
More traffic on Hornbower.
Ma'am?
Mary Higgins, 148 Brighton Avenue. You stated that you would answer questions or address comments from the public. At the previous council meeting, I specifically asked you the names of members on the screening and hiring committee for our new town manager. You either forgot to answer or refused to answer. For the second time, I'm asking you, who comprised the hiring committee that approved of the new town manager?
Is that it for your comments? Is that it for your comments, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. I did forget to answer, sorry. It was no, no secret, no conspiracy, I was not on the committee. It was Councilman Graziano, Cazarelli, Councilman Cazarelli, and Councilman DePena. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Tucci answered Mr. Mattingly here. Big portion, I forget, I don't know, millions, that is retro pay, and the salary is selling his contract. And he said that's a big portion of the reason why there's this increase in here. This goes on all the time. We have an extraordinary expense, and that's the excuse we're given. The problem is, government, unlike the private sector, doesn't go back to zero-based budgeting. Because if whatever, the million dollars was a one-time expense because we had to go, next year, council people, oh, the public forgot that, so they use that as their base for next year. And let me tell you something, when I was in office, I went to zero-based budgeting. The treasurer come in my office, December 15th, and says, "You've got a big problem." I said, "What's the problem?" He said, "You've got $110,000 left in your budget." I said, "What's the problem?" "You've got 15 days to spend it." I said, "Why?" "'Cause our base for next year will be lower." I told the head, "Well, the base should be lower," all right? But that's the problem, Mr. Tucci's answer, "Yeah, we got this one-time expense for this reason, but then we forget next year. So we spent the $1 million because of this one-time expense. Next year's budget base should be $1 million lower to begin with." That never happens. You just say, "Oh, this is last year's budget, and, and we're only going up, well, much of 2% cap. You guys want to go up 3.5% cap." So, you know, some of us are wise to you, and not all you. It's the state and all that pulled these hoodwinkings on us, and that's why the state, the state is in. And it's a disgrace. And in regards to the public works department, have we stopped that policy of filling a hole of water or sewer leak with gravel and using the same dirt like public serfs and all the other utility companies? Has that practice stopped?
Mr. Tucci? As soon as Mr. Frantantoni is done, if you can answer.
I believe it has, and that's helped contribute to the amount of dirt that we have down in DPW.
That, that was the main reason, I, I say it all the time.
The sewer line on, was it Lake Street, was the main reason that I was given, why the majority of that dirt is there?
Well, believe me, the entire length of Lake Street would have been 10 feet higher off all that wood. That wasn't all from Lake Street.
Oh, no, just relate the facts, the facts that have been presented to me.
Well, I have the fact that during that period, I worked on two houses on Lake Street, and it was not only the center, it wasn't this master mountain that was taken out of there, so... Well, that's all, but I just want to say goodbye to Mr. Tucci, although I'm glad that, I'm still going to pay him. $37,500 for consulting, I don't know what he's going to consult for, if we got this excellent new town manager. He should be perfectly qualified to handle this town, all the accolades I see in the paper thrown at him. So I don't know why we continue to pay Mr. Tucci. But I do want to thank him for a few things. I want to thank him for showing up a few days a week to work. I want to thank him for not sealing the cracks in the...
You could address the chair.
Okay, to the chair. I want to thank him for not sealing the cracks in the street as a maintenance name, which I asked every year, and he said, "Yes, yes," he always says yes, but he don't do it. And I want to thank him for allowing the mountain to be built at DPW. And I want to thank him...
Does that start in, that, that was accumulated in the last 3.5 years, correct?
What?
That, that happened in the last 3.5 years, I know.
It's true, most of it, most of it?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know you wanted to wrap up, Mr. Frantantoni.
Because some of us, again, I'm not too good at technology, but some of us have been taking pictures and posting on Facebook, so we have it. Most of that mountain is the last three years. And finally, I want to thank you for raising my municipal taxes 10% in the last couple of weeks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Jerry Delgert, Grove Street, I have a question based on number four. When we sent out the new, the mailing for the estimated tax bills, will that be based on the old assessment or the new assessment?
It's based on projections, based on projection of the new assessment, including the settlement.
So when we get our bill finally in September, it'll be all based on the new assessment?
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Jeff Mattingly, again, 56 Walnut. Am I to understand correctly through Mr. Tucci's comments that we have $200,000 this year to address the accumulated disposal need in DPW, and maybe possibly $100,000 for next year?
I believe that's what he said.
So I am correct in that, okay, that's good.
Partially, I didn't say $100,000 for the next year, my estimate was closer to $200,000 for the fall.
That's about probably what's going to be necessary, for sure. I'd like to speak to the idea that, you know, we do have a CCO, Continued Certificate of Occupancy ordinance in Belleville, do we not? So then, certainly when apartments change hands, when things of that nature occur, and people move out, new people move in, then our codes department has the ability to look at these properties and make sure that they're compliant, in compliance, and that potentially document the condition of the properties at that point in time, correct?
Correct.
So then, potentially now, when we have circumstances like six cars suddenly showing up in a new tenancy, and more, you know, sheetrock going into, you know, basements and attics, work going on off-hours or whatever, that CCO potentially could kick in, and we could look into these properties for compliance once again, correct?
Yes.
Why are we not doing that?
We are. Every single apartment, every single house that gets sold in Belleville gets a Certificate of Occupancy, is inspected, for GFIs, for smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, every single apartment that changes over also receives a CO.
No, but I'm talking about potentially modifications to basements and attics.
That's all caught then, so if you put up a pool without a permit, you get caught at that inspection, you can't close in your house, you can't change title until you remediate, you know, remove the deck, remove the shed.
And so when residents in Belleville complain about excessive amounts of garbage suddenly appearing new, and more cars, and we do have a square footage formula for how many people could be potentially living in a home, aren't we? I mean, certainly when people grow families, that's one thing. Or even bring in extended relatives and things of that nature. But when we start putting so many people in a home, that potentially, that there's all kinds of hazards in terms of fire, police danger, you know, when you have people, more and more people getting crowded, and we certainly live in S's... and more people getting crowded, and we certainly live in SS County, we are crowded. You know, I live right off of Bellville Avenue. There's gonna be a traffic light at Garden Avenue in no time, because it's no longer manageable, major cross-town traffic, and it just is impossible to get out of your side street any longer. It's gonna be a right turn only town. You know, you're not gonna be able to cross the street unless you get out and block traffic, which a lot of people are doing now. Stop signs just seem to be voluntary. People don't stop any longer, they just blow right in through the intersection and endanger pedestrians and other motorists, and simply don't have regard any longer. So, you know, it seems to me that that's, we need to enforce that CCO, and I would encourage people.
We do enforce the CCO, every single apartment, every house against one.
Well, I think we have more than, we have, we probably could employ a few more people to constantly check on Board of Health and.
Are you advocating for more employees?
Yeah, me, hire me, I need the benefits.
I just wanna, I just wanna know where we all stand, okay?
Well, now, this is the point also, where we're looking about possibly taking eminent domain of commercial properties, privately owned properties, and industrial properties, and yet we hear complaints from this council, you mayor, that there is no compliance, that there are dangerous circumstances at 681, which is now 705. Well, why haven't they been addressed? Why doesn't Building Codes hold the landlord to heel to, feet to the fire and get compliance?
I believe they do. If you come to municipal court, you'll actually see them here.
We're talking many, many years of no compliance, dangerous circumstances over a long, going back 20 years when you were.
I've only been here for 10 months, hold me accountable for 10.
No, well, going back to 20 years when you were here then, it was happening then.
You got me.
It's only gotten worse.
Okay.
All right, so rather than take it under eminent domain, why don't we simply, you know, have the Building Codes Department issue fines, have the, you know, rather than take that property off the hands of the owner, who have milked a tremendous amount of rental out of that property, you gotta wonder how many of them are registered, how many have CCOs, certificates of occupancy for their businesses, our registered businesses.
I do need you to wrap up now.
Well, that's what I'm asking you, please wrap up and have Building Codes go over there and do their job.
Thank you.
Is that too much to ask?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Sheldon?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Annan Flight Street. As I began to allude during the public hearing for the budget, last October 5th, when you had the special hearing for last year's budget, Mr. Fakone began to recite some of the numbers for the school district, and I realized that he was not using the 2018 numbers, he was using 2017. So he, I spoke with him right after that meeting was over, put that to his attention, and he said, "Have your BA contact me immediately," and that happened the following morning. Our BA, Mr. Palladino, spoke with Mr. Fakone. Mr. Fakone then tried to argue that the A4F law, which I'm sure you are familiar with, had never been properly transmitted from our BA to the town hall, which wasn't true. In fact, our BA had all the documentation, all the receipts coming, he had sent that information last summer, so he had, Mr. Fakone had the information months in advance. Well, just to cut to the chase, I wanted to give it to Fakone, these are unofficial copies, but they're still copies of the A4F. In any case, I'll leave these with Mr. Tucci, you can give them to Mr. Iacono, since he'll be front and center with this, and I made a few extra copies. Again, these are unofficial, but just for your NFYI, these are the A4F, so there's no excuse not to have this information.
Thank you.
But you're welcome. The next thing I wanted to mention, Mr. Frantatoni, infinite respect to Mr. Frantatoni, he's God-sent to our community, but he began to exonerate the board and the council for budget increases. I just wanna set the record straight by stating that initially, the Board of Education was going to increase the budget by almost $2 million, there was about a 5.3% increase, but working with Dr. Tomco, Mr. Palladino, Mr. Egan, and the Finance Committee, we trimmed over $1 million off the budget, brought the increase down to about 2.7%. So we are ever mindful of the burden that taxpayers have to shoulder here, and we did do everything really possible without making staffing cuts and other draconian measures to bring the school budget back within a plausible limit. Last thing I wanted to mention, there's something I've been wanting to ask since you became mayor, and that's the new township website. The template that you use for the township website is exactly the same that you use for other of your clients, I believe Linden and Garfield or Gutenberg, but you cited that the reason why having the township website under your company is not an ethical violation is because you're not charging for the website. But you very conveniently removed the branding, the Alpha Dog branding, from the township website, but it's there for the other communities, again, same template. So if it's not an ethical violation, why are, it's a little bit of subterfuge, why do you remove the Alpha, any references to Alpha Dog from the township website, when you're using essentially the same thing? Moreover, if you go to the video gallery, I think you use Vimeo for the videos, every one of those videos have the Alpha Dog branding, so you're essentially getting free advertising for your company by having that set up. So you are deriving.
So I have confused, you want the logo there, or you don't want the logo there?
Well, I'm trying to reconcile how you're saying you're not getting any financial benefit by having Alpha Dog run the township website, but I can make the argument that you are getting a financial benefit. And I would like to even ask one more request of you, but I'm sure this will be denied. In order for us to know that you're not getting a business deduction, you're not claiming to the IRS that you're doing some charitable work on behalf of the community, because you typically charge anywhere from $40,000 to $60,000 a year for your clients based on the documents I've seen to run their websites, would you be willing to publish your corporate website to prove to the residents of Bellville that you are not getting any financial benefit in having Alpha Dog run the website? That's all, you wanna answer it? I would appreciate it.
So just to clear up, in case anybody's wondering, Mr. Sheldon used to run the prior website. And if you saw it, you should know that he used to charge $17,500, $500 a year for that service. My company does it for free, I make no money on it. I put my website and put my services up against the prior one any day of the week. I think now we livestream council meetings, we archive council meetings there, we're now on social media. I would argue at any given day of the week that we are providing a far better benefit to the residents, being more open and transparent. And by the way, since we talk about cost savings a lot here today, we save the residents, me being mayor and donating my company's time, provide the service to the township, save $17,500 a year, which really is over $60,000 in the four years that I'll be here. That's all I'm gonna say on that topic. Anybody else?
Would you like to tell the community how much you charged from 2004 to 2014, the hundreds of thousands of dollars of invoices that I have from Alpha Dog for the services you provided?
Thank you.
And show the township like.
Mr. Sheldon, your time is up.
In 2014, which was one of the worst websites in the state.
Anybody else? End on that note. No? Motion closed. Motion made, and second to close, public comment, and clerk Colerall?
Councilmember Cazarelli, DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
Consent agenda, anybody have anything? Yes, I thought I had some. Maro, the cessage.
Seven and eight?
Seven and eight. So we're gonna move the consent agenda? Motion made?
Second.
Motion made, second to call the consent agenda, clerk Colerall?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Yes.
President number seven, just the roll call.
Somebody move it, please.
Number seven?
I'll move it.
Second. Motion made, second clerk Colerall?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Abstain? Number eight, somebody move it.
Make a motion to move it.
Second. Motion made, second clerk Colerall?
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melvin?
Abstain? Okay, new business? Do you have something here, Cal?
Yeah, I actually put that on the agenda because we got a letter from Signature Fitness, and the reason why I put it on new business is because I wanna be able to prepare a resolution for the next time.
Here.
I'm sorry, I don't have a microphone. I put it on because I wanna have a resolution for the next time, if it's okay with mayor and council, I would normally do this in a work session, but it'd be too late. Got a letter from Signature Fitness requesting the use of a fire truck for a fundraiser for autism awareness. I spoke to the chief, I spoke to his secretary about what would be necessary for the town to allow that, which would be an insurance certificate and a whole harmless agreement. It would be used for one truck, they're gonna have a bunch of competitions indoors for autism awareness, to raise funds for autism awareness, and then the final event will be a truck pull with the use of the fire truck operated by fire department staff, but provided they give us an insurance certificate and a whole harmless agreement, if it's okay with you all, have a resolution prepared.
You have patrols on the truck?
No, 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 it's going to the.
It's an autism fundraiser.
It's an autism fundraiser, it's Signature Fitness, so I believe members of Signature Fitness will try to pull the truck in, but we will be, we have no liability, and we're just, they wanna use a Bellville fire department truck, and if it's okay with the chief, and we just, mayor and council wanna authorize and I'll get a reservation next time, if you're okay with it. Is that all right?
No problem.
Okay.
That's it for that? New business, I know some of the council members had some comments that they wanted to make.
Yeah, new business, I just wanna thank Maro for his tenure there at Bellville, that it could run, I agree with your list of accomplishments, it is very impressive, and I wish you good luck in whatever you decide to do after this.
Along those lines, Mr. Tucci, I'd like to wish you much luck in wherever life takes you, and just really thank you for helping us in this process, as you know, we've been in council for 10 months and had plenty of questions, plenty of new ideas, and I appreciate you guiding me through the process, so thank you very much.
We'll end up with you on that, so, Tom.
Mr. Tucci, thank you, thank you, I'm only here 10 months, but I can't thank you enough personally for guiding me and my colleagues along the way. It's been a good one, and however, in the future, my support is here for you.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure.
I am surely, surely gonna miss you, Mr. Tucci, you have taught me a lot, try to keep me calm, because a lot of times I'm not, and I'm really, really gonna miss you, and I'm sure I'll be visiting you as much as possible.
I look forward to that.
Lots of luck.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Maro, you and I go way back, here anyway, and it's no secret, I voted against you in public in 2004.
I did.
I was your swing vote in 2016.
You were.
If I should have moved to nothing, which I'm not, I would vote for you for mayor. You're really, on a personal level, you're really a true gentleman, you're a compassionate person, you've got a great personality, you're a very, very good manager, and you gotta play your cards right, you're a good politician, because when my mother turned 92, I'll never forget this, you sent flowers to my house, and you said to me, "You're very lucky you still have a mother." And I said to you, "How'd you find it?" By the way, it came out of Maro Tucci's personal money, not money, because that'll be on the face of tomorrow, but anyway, I said, "How'd you know about this?"
He's gonna be there anyway.
And Mark Makini was behind you, who told you this.
Yes, he was.
And I never forgot that, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for the personal problems that I've had this year, in my personal life, you were there for me, so thank you, and I hope you're the next mayor, but don't tell Alex.
So, Mr. Tucci? I have a couple of, number one, don't change yourself on number, that's the number one. I do wanna say, and I had some comments that I was prepared to make, and you kinda took them in your list of accomplishments early, but I just wanted it to come from me, and I want the residents to know this, that in this last labor negotiation, and I spoke on this in my state of the township, it was Mr. Tucci's idea to go to the unions and ask them to give back a year of their retro, and that move right there, that decision, which, I don't know if you remember the conversation, but when you told me this in your office, I said, "You're nuts." I said, "It's just not gonna happen," and Mr. Tucci got it done. And that move right there saves a Bellville residents hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we're now looking at increases, and we're talking about budget and all that, your budget this year would be substantially higher if he didn't have that idea, and of course, if the unions didn't agree to that, so that's something that, and it doesn't matter where you got that idea, if you were sitting here in Bellville, or. Up to my friends. Or if you were sitting somewhere else, and the fact that, and I've always said, on-site, you know, I've always said in-house, and you know that when I say in-house, I meant on-site, that was a thing. That was our running joke. That was always our running joke. I also want to say that we bet it now $160,000 for this budget because of the lawsuit, we have about $500,000 or $600,000 that we're paying out from previous years. Under your tenure, not one lawsuit, correct?
Correct.
Relating to employees or anything like that. So that's 3.5 years we've gone, so the suits that we're settling now, which are the one-time hits, by the way, emanate from prior to your tenure. And again, that goes to speak to a professional manager, a manager that's skilled, got experience, and got the right credentials, and has HR experience and everything else you had, so that's a testament also to you and your tenure, that not one lawsuit emanated from your tenure. And lastly, I do wanna say that we have, you made a great comment before to somebody when you talked about we're probably a net neutral or a net negative as far as staffing and all that. Mr. Tucci has spent considerable time looking at the budget and looking at our titles, and our most recent hires, and nobody knows this, because nobody publicizes it, you're good stuff, our most recent hires are in a far different salary order, so they're in a far different title. So we are not gonna necessarily have a clerk, or clerk one, or clerk two, really getting to the really high, almost six-figure dollar amounts that we've seen in Bellville for a long time, because Mr. Tucci created different titles, and now we have, so as we lose new, as we lose old employees, that their total benefit package, their compensation, the benefits, the element, could be north of $110,000, $120,000 a year. As we replace those employees, they're not going into those titles. Number one, they don't pick up what that salary left off, but they're no longer even in that title where you can get that high. And again, that's something that you did, and our most recent employees are all in those titles, where they're gonna be capped at a reasonable, from what I think is market rate. So those are things that we don't necessarily all talk about, and you don't know he's doing that stuff, but those are just three, and I know you had a whole list of things that you rattled off, but those are three things that are really gonna impact Bellville for the near future, and I thank you for setting us on that correct course, and I do thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor, thank the council for your kindness, I appreciate it, and thank you again for the honor of serving. So with that said, motion to adjourn. We have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.